I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a moment of silence for our fallen military? You may be seated. Kristin, can we do roll call?
Dick?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Dick?
Here.
Simon?
Yes.
Lane?
Here.
Armstrong?
Here.
Howard?
Here.
And introductions.
Scott Sutter, chief of police.
Dr. Gray, CPW director.
Kristin, can you act city clerk?
Jen Beach, deputy treasurer.
Ellen Glass, city manager.
Jerry Lane, council member.
Sam Howard, city council.
Mike Gildar, city attorney.
Liz Armstrong, mayor.
Brad Dick, mayor of Pittman.
Tom Hicks, city council.
Brenda, Brenda Simon, city councillor.
Denise Miller, city councillor.
We have no special presentations, no public hearings. Um, we had three items of correspondence. Um, the 2024 planning commission annual report, 2024 downtown development authority board annual report, and the 2024 historic district commission annual report. Were there any questions on those items?
No, my apologies.
Okay, we're gonna be moving to public comments. So, any person wishing to address the city council during a meeting will get three minutes under public comment. When the public comment is approached, don't be in checkup. Individuals wishing to speak will be called upon utilizing the build-out comment forms. Remarks should be addressed to the presiding officer, and it is not a time for debate, but for questions or comments for council and/or staff. Questions will be answered if the information is readily available. If the answers are not available during the meeting, council or staff will contact the individual within 48 hours and respond to the question within 10 days of when the information becomes available. The first public comment of the night is Monica Lerner.
Monica Lerner, I live at 1022 West Broad Street in Linden. So, first off, um, on my trash bill, um, it was more than what was normal. And so I thought it was the new, um, trash thing. So when I put it in, um, I found out that there was a upcharge, a fuel surcharge. Um, so my thing is, you know, all it says on my bill is just SW, which, you know, it doesn't tell me that there's something extra on there. And my bill has been the same, you know, all last year. So it made me think, you know, that we were paying the new price. So if we could get more of a breakdown, I think that would be helpful. So, um, on the code enforcement, it just shows from December 1st to December 13th. Um, so what happened to code enforcement between the 14th and the 31st? Um, so I would like to know why when roll call was done on January 13th meeting, um, Brad Dick was named as mayor pro tem, but the city website continues to show someone else as mayor pro tem. Um, also, they tried how many times, um, quoted, um, someone else as mayor pro tem. So, you know, what, why is there misinformation out there? So, on the water, I still contend that the bills need to be fair. Instead of the one-inch pipes paying more, why are the water customers paying double this amount when we don't even have the water turned on yet? How can the city staff, you know, turn it around saying that, you know, they knew that one-inch pipes were going to be, uh, urban when they bought their house? You know, that doesn't make sense to me. Um, the payment plan is all well and good, but that doesn't solve the problem of the bills being not fairly distributed. So, in 1999, the water pressure problem was addressed, yet nothing was done for 25 years. Then we have comments made about the Union Block would still be here if they had the new water. That's, that's not fair. So there was, um, a lot of dates thrown out about, you know, this, that, and the other thing, but it still remains that October 2022 was when this all took effect, or when it was voted on. And so, you know, putting it, the burden on new people, um, just isn't, isn't a fair thing. So we kept hearing that the city had no say in the Dollar Street coming into town. However, the planning commission report shows that the final site plans were approved for 495 West Broad Street as a new retail store. So, you know, why tell us that there was no choice? And then we find out later that there was choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Collins.
So my clarification on rules before my time starts. Uh, my understanding, timing doesn't start until after I finish saying my name and I start speaking my piece, or lack thereof. Uh, I'm going to be playing an audio clip because I've recorded to make sure I say I'm a topic. If somebody needs me to turn it off, please tell me. Not trying to blast anybody out here, but I have no clue how long it's gonna be when I hit. And I am minute to minute on this thing. So, my name's Justin Collins. I'm at 312 Pauline Pass in Linden. And of course, now it's not a lockdown.
You have time.
We live in a city that had... And of course, now it's not. We live in a city that has one out of five people at retirement age. We sit with a population of people 70 and older that is 30% higher than the average of your city. Our city has a median average income that is 10% less than the average for the state. Unfortunately, this hits those who need the most health the hardest. Many of these people are not in a position to go back to the workforce and pay for these astronomical increases. I fail to see how extending the time people have to pay the bills helps more than once. $300 is $300. If people don't have it due to an increase, the extended payment terms don't help. So congratulations, this solves nothing. And if you think it does, you should not be representing the city. How the increase was explained to me was a service fee from $21 per quarter to $181 per quarter. That is an increase of $106 per one-inch line, $640 a year before we even talk about the current price increase per unit of billed water and the expected future ones. These fees alone will cost my family an additional $12,800 for the next 20 years. Add to that my winter taxes that have more than doubled in the last four years. The city has known about this issue with water pressure since at least 1999. Had the city been slightly proactive, they could have made a small, reasonable increase to build the savings to cover the cost of maintenance. But instead, the arch officials continue to kick the can down the road, just like the idea of adding 20 days to the payment cycle. I follow a motto of piss-poor planning on your part does not constitute emergency in my part. Well, the past city council's piss-poor planning is hurting us all. The city has no other choice but a massive increase? Maybe before reaching into everybody's pockets and stealing money, you should stop spending as much. Maybe a tapped-off city should not be buying BFW halls when they don't have enough money for their existing infrastructure needs. Maybe we shouldn't be turning the Exzeble of Eagles Park into an ice skating rink even if the labor was free. Who paid for the wood, the nails, the water used to fill it? It may sound petty, but so is doubling everybody's water bill because the city is too broke and doesn't have enough money to pay for it any other way. Maybe the city shouldn't allow city officials to run private businesses out of public offices at our cost using our resources such electricity, water, gas, and wear and tear on community property for personal gain. Maybe a city our size that tends to have more cop cars in the parking lot than on the road doesn't need to upkeep, maintain, or ensure that many cop cars. Furthermore, the officers driving those cars should not be wasting tax dollar funds on fuel to drive them to neighboring cities for non-mutual aid reasons, such as a car wash they like better or going to get their lunch in Fenton. The seconds matter. How far from the city are you if the officers are getting food at 23 and 00? How is this serving and protecting our city? To the city servant who thinks that angry residents speak in their mind online, in person, or any other form of harassment, I encourage you to go back to government class and read the Bill of Rights. There are posts, phone calls, and emails on protected rights. The first amendment guarantees us the right to petition the government for redress grievances. People are hurting and are afraid of what is to come. If these words harm your feelings, then I encourage you to step down unless somebody with a back want to take your place. I don't care if you like me, you're my employee. You serve us, not the other way around. Your authority, while limited, is granted to people voting you in. I promise, the last thing you want is for me to step into your position.
Jim Hurst.
Uh, Jim Hurst, 250 Pauline Pass, Michigan. Um, I just have one simple question related to the fee schedule. How is... I guess I'm trying to understand the logic in the fee schedule being based on pipe size and not water usage. You know, one example, if I were to be a snowbird and move to Florida for five months out of the year, I'm still going to be paying a fee at a higher, you know, pipe size rate, even if I'm not using any water. So, I think the first two folks had very good points as well. And, um, that was all, I just wanted to look for clarity on how the, um, the fee schedule was, uh, I guess, put together. So, thank you.
Barbara Moss.
My name is Barbara Moss. I'm with the Linden Mills Historical Society. And I just had a comment regarding the restoration of the mill building. Are we sure or are we unsure if the city and the architects are aware of the thin line they are on regarding the Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation? As it will be possible that we will lose our place on the National Register of Historic Buildings. Our mill was the first building in Genesee County to be given that honor in 1972. Also, on another note, through the Historical Society of Michigan, there's a program called Michigan Historic Heritage Home. It recognizes homes that are constructed at least 100 years ago with a custom-made cast aluminum plaque that bears the name of the home's original owner and its year of construction. This program is sponsored by the Meyer Foundation, and we have posters available if anyone is interested. Thank you.
Peter Moss.
Good evening. I'm Peter Moss, the president of the Linden Mills Historical Society and Museum. Five years ago, during COVID, when it was announced that her school was going to go into lockdown, my nine-year-old granddaughter came home crying and very upset. She told her mom, now everyone is going to be stupid. At the time, we laughed and thought it was cute and funny. Now, in reality, it is no longer funny, and perhaps my granddaughter's perception is not far from where we are today. The mission statement of the Linden Mills Historical Society is to preserve the heritage, the history and appearance of the Linden area. One of its main objectives is to educate young and old of Linden's past in hopes that it will be passed on for generations to come. During the time that our museum was open, we were amazed at the number of out-of-town visitors who stopped in and admired the mill's interior. In addition to admiring our many educational and interesting artifacts and displays, they also expressed interest at the original structure of the mill. They marvel at the enormous hickory and oak hand-hewn timbers and beams. Also still visible are the remnants of the nab and tube wiring which supplied the electricity to the mill in the early days. There was no evidence of any screws or nails used. All this will be covered and hidden if the plans are to white-box the entire interior. The Historical Society purchased and installed much of the wooden walls and floors, the stairs going to both levels, closet space on each level, and a glass-enclosed, dust-free military cabinet. Later, the Linden Mills Historical Society paid a large portion for three chairlifts to reach those top floors, and also purchased shutters for the 17 windows. Doing all the maintenance to the top two floors, we believe we have been worthy tenants and did more than was expected to maintain our museum to make it a popular place within the community. The Linden Museum is one of the largest small museums in the entire state. We receive between 1,500 and 2,000 visitors each year. And we only open between Labor Day and Memorial, Memorial Day and Labor Day, and, and also for holiday happening. We were told to leave the building to allow room for the restoration. We packed up our, our many priceless artifacts, moved and stored them. The city officials, until this day, have not given us word that we will be returning to the mill. I still refer to the survey from three years ago where nearly 90% of the Linden residents wanted the library and museum in the mill building. A few months ago, we received a note with a check from Representative Mike Mueller indicating that he too was under the impression that our museum would come back after the restoration was done. The importance of a museum should be a top priority, especially for the younger generations. We ask again, please consider us back into the home that we've had for 50 years. All of my granddaughter's words, that everyone is going to be stupid. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna try this. Is Ruth Tossi?
Yep.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Ruth Tossi, and I live at 214 Chestnut Way in Linden. Um, I, unlike probably a lot of these people that are here tonight, um, I'm a new, uh, resident. And my husband and I decided to retire here in the city of Linden, and we moved in probably about 12 weeks ago. Uh, much to my surprise, I received an exorbitant water bill that I was, couldn't believe. Um, the water bill is like adding a car payment, um, on our monthly income. It's, 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 I've never seen anything like it in my life. So I, I just had a few questions to try to figure this all out, what's going on, and how come we weren't notified before we bought the home that we would have an exorbitant water bill to move into your community? Um, there should be some kind of mandate that you give to your realtors who sell these homes here, so they know, so we can either deter or decide that we want to pay this big amount of money that was decided on, I don't know how many years ago. Um, my questions are, how many residents, um, are in this water debacle? Um, is it just the interior, just the city people? You have a city of about 5,000 approximately. It might be higher, it might be lower, but that's what my research has found. So I'm guessing maybe half of those people? And half of those people are gonna pay $3.5 million on the backs of us? I don't understand how any of you could be comfortable with that. Not one person sitting here. So when I bought my house for $340,000, you're telling me I need to add on another $150,000 to $175,000 for I don't even know how long? I mean, there's a lot of non-information out there. 20% of your community is 65 or older, and we're retired. And I was fiscally responsible to know what I have and to spend my money properly. And because this city has not been fiscally responsible, should not be on the vets of these residents. Has anybody even tried to contact our representatives, our congressmen? Kristin Rivett, Lena Feis? Has anybody contacted, um, anybody to see if there's any grant applications for us? I know Benton Harbor did, and they got 11 point some million dollars from the state to help their community and help their residents to pay those bills, because they couldn't afford $240 water bills. I think we live in a poor community, and I, I mean, I don't see this as Birmingham where we're all flowing tons of money. So I really just feel like you need to be more open, more transparent about everything, and, and fiscally responsible. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Any other public comment? You're in the Zoom room?
We got one in the back room.
Oh, you've already spoken. I meant new.
Oh, I can't keep you going.
Not in this section, sorry.
Can I speak?
Can you go out and, and comment? I'd love to super fast for you. Thank you. Tony Johnston.
Terry.
Terry Johnston, sorry.
Terry Johnston, um, 306 North Bridge. And I've been here for two years. I moved to your, um, I saw the mill and saw my house. I ended up with home. Um, the water is upsetting, but what you're doing to the mill is super upsetting. And what Peter Moss just said is why I'm standing up here. Are you gonna white-box the inside of that building? Because if you do, you should all be ashamed of yourselves. All right? Can we keep it the way that it looks inside? Everybody wants it to stay the way it is. And if this city can't figure out how to find $45,000 a year to keep the mill the way it is, then you guys need to figure out how to do your jobs better. That's absurd. In 30 years, the water wasn't taken care of, the mill wasn't taken care of. What's next? That's what I'm thinking. And right now, I'm renting my house, and I want to buy a house, and I want to live here, retire here, but I'm actually, don't think that I'm gonna buy a house here and stay here, because I'm not gonna be able to afford to with what I hear about the tax increases and the water increases and how you mismanage the mill. It's disgusting. You have that mill on every single city document, yet you shit all over it. Excuse my language. I hope you guys can do better.
We're moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a makeup, or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
One of the amendments needs to be amended. The city council meeting that's in January 13th. Um, there's a couple, there's a place where it quotes, um, um, the counselor comments section, Kristin, and the language is a bit garbled there. Yeah, my, yes, it is. Yes, it's my bad. Yes.
So are you making a, a motion to approve consent agenda as amended? Or to reflect your changes?
To reflect a change in the premise, just to make them, because if it gets garbled, there's a type error.
But that's what you're asking?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Moving on to the new business. Um, 2025 Mill Pond Treatment Contract for the Aquatic Nuisance Plant Control Incorporated.
Madam Mayor, Councilors, Nick is here for aquatic nuisance, and I'll put you on the spot here in a second, I'm sure. But I'll, I'll just give them a little background as to how we got here since we have four new. Um, so in your packet, if you reference the memo, um, that the staff prepared, you'll see that the seasonal contract is up for renewal. Aquatic nuisance is actually proposing the, a no increase for that renewal. Um, we bid to this three years ago. Um, this is a relatively newer service that we started doing on the Mill Pond. Last year, we actually expanded beyond, uh, there was a small area that we were not treating that was caught, and we, we did add that, um, last year. Um, Nick comes to us with a, 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 a vast, you know, knowledge. Um, he's, he's, he does Byram Lake as well, weed assessment and other area lakes and things like that, and I can let him speak to that itself. Um, we started doing this three years ago as we promote the Mill Pond as an attraction and encourage, you know, use and things like that. We've seen the need for it, and it's had a very positive response. And due to the fact that there was no increase in this current one that Nick is proposing, uh, we are recommending that council approve, um, for this year, for the, for the upcoming, um, treating season. So Nick, if you want to take the podium and...
Nick Brooks, Aquatic Nuisance. As Ellen said, um, I mean, I've, I've been doing this now for almost 15 years, um, and grew up around it. My family owned it for 30-plus years, so we even, I've been around my whole life. And, uh, um, we've been doing applications for, this will be the fourth year now, uh, on, on the Mill Pond. And we were finally starting, you know, you guys were overrun with invasive weeds, and it was this kind of a swamp. Um, starting to finally get, you know, those invasives under control. They're still gonna be there ever here, but you're starting to get those native plants, you know, that we're starting to see late in the season, which is a good sign that, you know, the water body is healthy. Um, and as Ellen said, you know, no changes for this year. I think we stick with the same, same program, same cost. Um, you know, if we have to kind of manage those, those native plants, we'll do that, but you know, right now, they're not causing a problem. They can, you know, they can kind of get out of hand, um, like every other plant. But, uh, yeah, it's, kind of just keep, keep doing what we're doing. Um, you know, if there's any questions or anything, suggestions that you guys have?
Do, um, does anyone in the audience have any questions about the aquatic nuisance? And Jerry?
Yeah, of course. Just, uh, as far as the effect on fish and wildlife and the water, what is, uh, how does that impact it?
Uh, I mean, all the products we use, you know, the registered, uh, EPA, the state of Michigan is really strict on what we can use. Um, so I mean, they've done study after study after study, you know, on the products we use. So it's, um, they've had, you know, no effects on fish. The only, the only product is copper sulfate, you know, that we have restrictions on, which we don't use on the Mill Pond, um, with spawning fish. You know, they, they implemented that about five years ago. So, but like I said, we don't, we don't use that. That's mainly for algae treatments anyway, so, which you guys don't have an issue because of, excuse me, because of the flow going through there. So, that question.
Um, are you monitoring for new invasive species?
Yeah, I mean, the, the bad thing is, with, you got, you know, you have pretty much the big three, uh, starry stone work, purpley pond weed, and Eurasian milfoil. And those are all in there, so we keep an eye out, you know. There's a, another pro, a plant called hydrilla coming up from the south that there's, they're seeing in Indiana and in southern Michigan, too, which, you know, if it goes, like, milfoil and everything else, it's probably gonna take about 10, 15 years to get here, but it probably will, especially with the way the winters are. You know, last year, we had 70 degrees in Pittsburgh, you know, so warmer water, everything's just takes off, and, you know, you don't get that ice cover, so it doesn't control it through the winter.
You're not seeing frogbit or any?
Not, not, no, not, uh, not at the moment. Um, there is, you know, purple loose stripe a little bit around the shoreline. Um, but as far as, I, I have not personally seen frogbit, so.
You have some good, um, do you have some good information on prevention of the nuisance plants getting into the water?
Yes, we can actually supply, you know, if you're, like, signs to put at the boat launch and stuff like that, you know.
That's what I was wondering, because I know through the state of Michigan, they have some.
Yes.
I've seen them at the state recreation area, but.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we can get them through, through Eagle, and they'll, you know, send them to us, and we can give them to you guys to post on it, on each side of the boat launch there, just to kind of notify, you know, and explain, wash off your boat and everything to prevent, especially zebra mussels and stuff like that. You know, that's, that's another big thing that, um, I haven't seen. I, I think they're in Panama, but, you know, so.
There really isn't many inland lakes that don't have them anymore?
Exactly, yeah. And it's, everybody wants crystal clear water, but with that, you know, that's, that's what they kind of, they help you with crystal clear water, but then you have the problem of, you know, what they do. So, had a guy almost cut his toe off, you know, jumping in the water. So that's, that's the problem. But, uh, yeah, we can get those to you and, um, or even put them up for you if you, you have a spot. We can get those to you and we can put them up for you if you, you have a spot that you want them. That's not a problem, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brad?
Oh, God.
Tom?
Yeah, I've got a two-part question for you, please. Is your, this is my first experience with you. Is your application a liquid or a granule?
Liquid.
It's a liquid?
Yes.
Okay, now what's the retention of that liquid staying there and not going over the dams?
Uh, well, that's, we usually use, I mean, it's, it's a couple hours, you know, the half-life, it's, it's pretty short. But the one product, flumioxydine, it's, it's in and out of the water pond. That's why the DEQ allows your eagle, I should say, allows you to treat up to a dam or flowing water to where all the other, all the other products have a setback, you know, depending on flow. So that's, and like I said, they kind of look at, you know, downstream. You guys had, there's a endangered mussel and that's why they kind of limited copper products. And so, you know, that's why we don't use them in there, because there's a chance that they're, you know, they have that in there. But they, they do a good job, you know, on permitting and stuff like that to kind of notify, you know, let you know what your setback is. I mean, you're gonna have drift, but, you know, you're not gonna be going miles downstream.
I live, I live downstream and we have those big mussels in the.
Do you? Yep, yep.
They're great to see because they help clean the water.
Exactly, yeah, and that's.
And that's. And stuff, so.
Yeah, and that's copper sulfate, that's why they, they restricted that, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Brenda?
No comments, thank you.
First of all, thank you, because I can tell a big difference on the pond. There's a lot of people that go and, they're doing kayaking and boating. And just going off of the properties, it's a big help that they're not getting the propellers, you know, filled with that. It's my understanding the people that are on the river are the ones that are paying for this, it's not coming out?
I, I don't, I don't know that part. I supply the contract.
No, I'm not sure where, where that information came from. This is something that the city council's decided to do. It was, when it was first brought to us, that was a consideration. But as we looked at the bigger picture with, we're promoting the use of the mill pond. We're the ones that are promoting activity on the mill pond. It's part of the water trail. You know, that was something that the, the city council took on.
Okay.
Yeah, it was something that was considered originally.
I would, I thought you voted on that. Is there something else that the people on the river pay for that's not coming up? Do you want to come on? Okay, all right, well.
Byram, well, maybe, maybe that's where it's getting confused things for the remainder. Byram Lake has an assessment, but the mill pond is completely separate. Yeah, and treated different.
Well, thank you anyway, because it's a good job over there. And a lot of improvement of going in and enjoying that water.
I just want to thank you, my question's already asked.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. Any other? All set?
So is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five mill pond treatment contract?
I make a motion that we approve the contract?
Armstrong?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Finmons?
Yes.
Howden?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Moving on to resolution number zero-two dash two-five. Resolution providing for a late penalty waiver pertaining to the City of London Water Sewer and Solid Waste Utility Bill. Our billing cycle date, September first, twenty twenty-four, rule number thirty of twenty twenty-four. Do residents have any questions on this? Moving on to Denise, any questions?
No.
Brenda?
No, I, I understood. We discussed this the last meeting, so.
No questions.
Brad?
No questions.
Jerry?
Nope.
No questions, that's good of you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve resolution zero-two dash two-five?
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Howden?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Finmons?
Yes.
All right, the city managers updated.
So just, just a couple of things. So just a reminder, February nineteenth is when we have our session with the vendor. Kristin did send out details about that and along with in that email, she also had information on upcoming trainings and things like that. I know we have Capcom coming up in March, so if you guys would like to sign up for any of the trainings, let us know and we'll get you signed up. Last week, our forecast breakfast was well attended. The mayor was able to speak on the year ahead and things like that. It was very well attended. We're working with PFM, as you guys know, as a, to do a review of the water rates. We had two additional rate increases that were previously approved in the spring of twenty twenty-four. Those are on hold until we can review and bring any further recommendations back to the city council. So just wanted to update you guys on that. And we do have a couple vacancies that have already came up with some of the boards and commissions. One on DDA and a couple on the board of review. So we'll, we'll be working to fill those vacancies hopefully over the next month. And I have a recommendation to you guys back in, in February, so.
Thank you. Any, any, are you on department reports? All right, council comments.
We have our city attorney.
Oh. She asked, I didn't have.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't hear that, okay.
Anything to contribute.
Okay.
All right, we'll start with Jerry.
Um, the only thing I have. Justin, would you be able to send that audio to me?
Actually, she's got a red copy of that.
Oh, does she? Okay, all right.
Yeah, and it's got what I did and had it cut out.
Okay.
So you had a physical copy of the recording then?
She had one, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's, that's all I have.
Pam?
I have a couple of things. The Parks and Recs, rec is going to provide an annual report, Kristin. We aren't required to by ordinance, I don't believe, but we decided we would do that. But it's got to go before the, our next meeting to get approved and then I'll be getting that to you. The, uh, there's, uh, right now, January first through March thirtieth is fox and kite ody mating season. So you may hear these animals more. Your best advice is don't leave a dog tethered outside or, or outside without you watching it. Because if it's a small dog, it might become lunch. And if it's a big dog, it might just get dated. It's, um, it's, and we see them behind our house all the time and we can hear them. So they're out there and they have that unearthly screech. So it's, it's just their, it's just their season, so. I read through the H, H two A architect report on the Village Foundation, Foundation Restoration. And Jackie Gates' report was spot on about what she needs to do to stabilize the base so it doesn't lean and all that. I just wanted to let you know that too. She does a very good job talking about technical language and putting it in such a way that, you know, it's easily understood. Head to my reports. And then we are, our next Parks and Rec meeting will, should be in March. And so hopefully I'll let you know before that, before that meeting, so you can all attend.
Thank you, Pam. Denise?
Couple things I want to address. The white box inside of the mill pond, that has not been addressed yet. We have not voted on anything like that. It was just sent out to the architect, we want to understand about what, some plans that they can come up with. I'm trying, the ice rink at the mill pond, or down at the Wood Park, that's what I call it. I know some kids have used it. I've expressed I think it'd be good for kids, but I understand the cost. So I wanted to address that. You know, it's a, I understand.
Trying to think what else to add on there.
When I addressed the union block about the water, it wasn't being, you know, like, making that comparison. What I can say is that, you know, the union block did burn down. And did we have to use water from the river? We did. And it was horrific, that's how I felt. Do I think that, you know, us changing over to another city water thing is the reason why we need to have new water? No. And there's four of us, you know, we're just got on the city council. And we're trying to do as best we can for the residents. And all of us, I pay a water bill. I live in the city too. And I'm here for the residents and I'll always be here for the residents, just like all of us are. I guess that's all I have to say, but it's, you know, when we're talking about white boxes inside the mill pond, or inside the mill building, I'm not bored either. But we have to come up with ideas of what we're gonna do. And I'm always open for ideas. So thank you.
Brenda?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
I have no comments tonight.
Denise, I addressed the white box thing. Mind if you had a question about the fuel surcharge on your solid waste? With the new vendor, there will be no fuel sur, fuel charges going forward. That was something that was in the contract for our, our old company. So I don't know how much farther we'd be able to break down the solid waste bill. Because there won't be anything like that going forward, but. Any other way to break down the solid waste portion of the mill then? I mean, it's just gonna be, it's just trash pickup. It's something we won't see, there won't be a fuel surcharge going forward. It was a, it was part of Republic's old contract where they could slip one in on us.
Yeah, it does seem funny that, because they're last one, I don't decide to make it.
Understood. If you want to submit your list of comments again, I'll try and get you some, get you answers.
So I attended my first Southern Lakes Parks and Rec meeting last Friday. And it was, I, I was welcomed and that was a really nice experience, to be greeted in that manner. As far as the water, this is what I, and what I can say. First off, my phone number is on my Facebook page. Anyone can call me. My email is also equally out there and, and they can email me as well. We hear you, I hear you. I don't actually want to speak for them, I hear you. And there, there, there is a lot of communication going on constantly with the city in regards with the water bills. So you are being heard. I understand your frustration. And we need a little bit of time to see if there is anything. I, I do not even want to say that there is, but if there is anything that now moving forward we can do that might lessen a little bit of the burden. And with that being said, that's where I'm going to draw the line tonight. And we're gonna move on to the financial reports. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the financial reports?
I'll make a motion that we pay our bills.
I'll second that.
Miller?
Yes.
Finmons?
Yes.
Howden?
Yes.
Beck?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Armstrong?
Yes. We will now be moving into closed session.
So, Madam Mayor, I wrote a letter, January twenty-fourth, Friday. I wrote it under the attorney-client privilege. The Open Meetings Act enables you to meet in closed session to discuss the contents of an attorney-client privilege, the communication. I would recommend that you, that you do so. And I'll simply indicate that because we'll be recessing and, and members of the audience will be stepping out, students who need signatures can.
In mind, we're actually gonna step out into the old annex and allow the public to stay here if they'd like, so.
Okay. All right, so any students that would like to get their papers signed?